Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. City of North Bend, Washington's City Council Meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one via virtual meeting. Called an order with the clerk, please confirm the role.
All council members present, your honor.
Thank you very much. First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. We have five items. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. God help second by Mr. Loudon back. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Next on our agenda is the public portion. Citizens comments, if you are here from the public and wish to speak on an item not on the rest of the agenda tonight, please indicate in the chat box or by star. Lost track, seven or nine? Forgot.
Nine.
Nine, star nine, and we will call upon you.
Do not have a mad dash to speaking.
No mad dash for the public portion. Okay, very good. We will move on then to commission and committee reports. First up tonight, Ms. Miller, Community and Economic Development.
Thank you, your honor. Today we met CD met at on October nineteenth at four o'clock. We held our meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. All were my fellow council members Rosen and Mr. Brendan there. We're all all there and we had a very hard hitting agenda, so we got through it under a good timeframe. And amongst the conversations we had began with two thousand and twenty-one zoning map amendments and associated municipal code amendments. We had further healthy discussion about the hotel performance standard amendments and then River Run discussion. We had a very good discussion through Mike on our city staff and then EV standards was our last agenda item. So all in all, we had a very thick agenda to go through, but we we've made some headway and I really appreciate all the effort from staff and my fellow council members. Thank you. And we meet again next November sixteenth at three o'clock.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Mr. God help.
Um, I don't the finance administration did not have a meeting. Our last meeting was September seventh.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Mr. Colton.
Our meeting was canceled due to no issues being brought up, so hopefully our next meeting will be next month.
Thank you very much. Transportation Public Works, Mr. Loudon back.
And now for something completely different. We met September twenty-eighth and we had twelve items on the agenda and a thirteenth without it. Uh, we discussed several issues, a bill of sales for infrastructure improvements being finalized. We had a authorized an agreement with KC and that for accepting the Washington State Department of Ecology, LS WFA grant. We had a discussion about paint striping closeout with Mr. Moore. We had a ceiling, a a parking lot ceiling contract awarded to Rainier Asphalt. We had an update on the wastewater treatment plant. And we had a discussion about a an emergency management plan contract that we recommended approval. And we had a discussion on the play fields restroom situation, which we also had a discussion on. And we will be meeting next on next Tuesday at four o'clock virtually.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Garcia.
Well, I'm going to rewind back to the original theme. We we haven't met since Aug- August twenty-fourth, but we are meeting next Tuesday to discuss budget budgetary items.
Thank you very much. Mr. God help back to you, Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Yes, and before I do that, I need a correction. I was corrected. Must be losing my mind these days with all the things we did. We did have a finance administration meeting and we discussed copier leases, third quarter budget adjustments and the solid waste extension agreement.
Um, I'm glad that was slipped to you carefully. I didn't want to call you out on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Birthday, right?
Yeah. I'll I'll go sonality with the new age. What can I say? On to Eastside Fire and Rescue. Well, as all of us are similarly involved with the discussion Eastside Fire and Rescue at the board meeting was part of it was around COVID nineteen and where we stood with our our force. Um, this was a decisive divisive issue within the workforce. However, vaccination rates improved greatly since the last month. At the time of the right this writing, there were one hundred and seventy-one firefighters vaccinated and eighteen who have not been vaccinated. There were a total of seventeen, nine percent of the firefighters who are subject to the October twenty-one disclosure. And as of today, the numbers came out that we lost six firefighters, seven went on leave. Um, three were put on light duty because they have committed to getting a vaccine. Um, the other thing we talked about was the mass directive and how that would impact our public meetings, impact inspections, and then the Eastside and Fire Rescue Offices. And also still the moratorium on ride alongs because of it. Also because of the vaccine and the number of personnel. We discussed a mid-budget amendment on the agenda of approximately nine hundred and four thousand dollars to select, train and provide for overtime coverage for vacancies that we have. Um, with all the ones we are, we are out, we are down twenty-five firefighters from ones we needed to recruit, ten plus the new ones. Um, we discussed the PFAS situation. Um, there was another round of testing in late September and we're getting prepared for a mitigation pilot. Kind of unique pilot. What we're going to be doing is in front of where the PFAS is surrounded, we're going to be digging and putting down some sort of filtration system that will hopefully stop the the PFAS from moving into the water system. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, the Woodinville transition went live. Um, so a lot of great work there was able to absorb Woodinville and bring Worgenville under the Eastside Fire and Rescue as a partner of ours. Um, as of September, uh, we also talked about wired wildlife wildfire prevention and talking about getting some staff to really focus on that going forward and that will be part of the fact meeting that will be coming up. Um, and what else? Real quickly, um, what was approved? Uh, on our agenda was the moving the finances, the budget meeting. We approved the by minute, the our by anyam budget was approved. Um, and our operating expense fund amendment was approved and the capital cap funnel facilities, maintenance and fund was approved and we approved a bill to purchase new SBAs, um, which were required for safety purposes. Kind of a short meeting then.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move next to regional committees. Any other council members serving down a regional committee like to report, Mr. Garcia?
Well, I don't want to report, but as hopefully all of you saw, the SCA is asking for nominations for committees. So if you're interested, please Alan Alan's on the committee. Blake Ross, you're are you in charge of putting the people on the committees?
That is correct. I am the pick nominating chair.
So if we have some people interested, uh, there's a short-ish application, I believe.
Online at the SCA website, you can fill it out. Uh, you can dazzle us with your writing skills, telling us all about your talents and desire to be a member of whatever select committee that you choose to be a member of. And you will get due consideration. And if I have to put my thumb on the scale, I will certainly try.
So if you have any interest in that, please, please, please turn those in sooner than later. Uh, the mayor and I had a robust debate a couple of times on how could this be due already, but but the timing of it is actually is actually now. So.
As but and add to that real quickly for you. As a member of one of those committees, you have a lot of input. It's really important. In fact, I have to re-up my application uh, too, because I've been on it two years already. So I just to add, I like that you put it out there. I would encourage uh, more of our members to come involved.
Heather.
Um, so Ross or Alan, I would like to be on one of those committees. And so how important is it for me to have you read why I want to be on that committee and to vouch for me?
Oh, you it it's not a matter of having people vouch for you. It's basically you give them, uh, you know, your background and what drives you to want to be a member of that particular committee. You know, it's not like you have to be sponsored or anything like that. Uh, we're always looking for highly qualified, motivated, interested people who are interested in participating. Heather, you would be an asset to any committee that you would choose to try and be a member of.
Thank you, Ross. And last year I tried to be on the public health or whatever that committee was and it didn't happen. So I feel like I need vouchers.
No, it's it's a lot of times people have been on these committees. They try and rotate them out after a certain number of years. And public health committee uh, is exceptionally competitive. As you found out, uh, there are a lot of people that that have spent a lot of years on that committee and trying to get on that committee. But if you can possibly start in as an alternative, as an alternate, that's a great way to 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 get started and I would encourage you to go to some since their meetings are being held virtually. I would encourage anybody interested in any committee to go to those committees online. Uh, you can, you can certainly observe and show an interest by being noted as being at those meetings and paying attention to what's being discussed.
So what you're saying, Ross is Alan's blocking her from being on that committee too.
I didn't want to. I didn't want to come out and say it, but you know.
Hey, I'm only an alternate. I have no power.
Kenyon, what's going on there, man? This is ridiculous.
But let's just broaden it out and say members that that regional committees are a great way for us to get influence into the broader picture outside of the city limits and can bring a lot of good things to the city. And let's leave it at that. Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Garcia. Any other regional reports?
All right, hearing done. We'll go on Ms. Demming for the commissions.
Yeah, the planning commission met on October ninth, uh, fourteenth and deliberated and provided their recommendations on the proposed amendments to the hotel land use performance standards. The next planning commission is scheduled for October twenty-eighth. However, at this time, we're not expected to meet. We don't have any agenda items ready for that meeting time. We expect that the next planning commission meeting will be a special meeting on November eighteenth because um, the normal schedule is on the Veterans Day holiday. For Parks Commission, the Parks Commission did not meet in September and will meet next October twenty-seventh. Um, they will be briefed on parks projects um, that that either the city staff or SiView are applying for for grant funding in the near future. The Parks Commission will also discuss the city's annual Arbor Day recognition scheduled for October twenty-ninth, three P M. For a tree planting in the habitat restoration area between the wastewater treatment plant and the South Fork Snowqualmie River. The Economic Development Commission did not meet this month and the next scheduled meeting is November twenty-third. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll just note to council members. Uh, city administrator Miller is not with us tonight because he is out celebrating his just recently occurred birthday. And a special opportunity, and so we gave him the night off. So no report for the overall administration tonight. All right, next item on our agenda, unless I've missed something. Let me take that glance. I'm getting the ugly look. Okay, thank you. Item number six on your agenda, AB twenty-one dash one one-two, public hearing and ordinance amending the taxes, rates and fee schedule regarding school impact fees. Um, the way we're going to conduct this, Ms. Demming, as an introduction, I believe I've seen Ryan Stokes is with us tonight from the school district who will be here. I'm sure to answer questions. Uh, I don't know, but assume that superintendent Lance Given did not make the meeting. I did want counsel to know that he was personally invited by me and did get the invitation sent to him. Uh, and with that, we're gonna, we're gonna take the opening um, overview. And then any clarifying questions only from council and then we will open the public hearing for anyone wishing to testify. With that, Ms. Demming.
Yes, um, the city adopted two ordinances in the past related to school fees. One is for adopting um, and the other is to um, put it on our fee schedule as well as to perform annual reviews. You have received a copy of the two thousand and twenty-one school district capital facilities plan with updates to the school fees. Um, as the mayor mentioned, there is a representative from the school district here to answer any questions you may have on the report. And I'll be happy to answer any clarifying questions you have as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes, do you want to give the overview?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Again, the capital facilities plan for the school district is a six-year outlook on capital needs uh, to increase capacity uh, around the district and that then calculates a proportional share of costs for new home development within the valley. Uh, we have um, a similar capacity generating projects as the prior few years and that being additional elementary capacity as well as our height recently completed high school continuing to add capacity. So the the cost elements that drive the impact fees are fairly similar to previous years with a the only difference being a one-year cost escalation uh, for for future costs. Uh, the the changes in the impact fees that are proposed. Uh, the single family impact fee would be would go up by five hundred and forty dollars to eleven thousand ninety-one. The multifamily is actually a decrease of a hundred and thirty-four dollars from the prior year uh, with a total of four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven. The main driver of those two differences is assessed valuations. The assessed valuations for multifamilies uh, were significantly higher uh, in in this year and that drives a larger credit uh, to the the impact fee. The impact fee gives credit for ten years of existing taxes to those homeowners. Uh, and so that that larger assessed valuation increased the credit for multifamily, which is why the fee went slightly down. Uh, then the single family, interestingly, interestingly enough, the assessed valuation from uh, the the prior year was negligible negligibly different or not, not much change. And so that's why that impact fee went up slightly.
Thank you. And for counsel, let me clarify if if what I'd like to do is if you have clarifying questions around the impact fee itself for Mr. Stokes, we'll handle that at this time. If you have broader questions, that may be more appropriate after the hearing. Um, but it is your meeting. You decide. So do we have any questions for Mr. Stokes at this time?
But just clarifying questions, not policy questions.
That's my suggestion. You might want to wait till
I'll wait.
till we've heard the hearing.
Run, Ryan, run. He's going to ask some questions.
Okay, seeing no clarifying on the impact fee language itself. Uh, we will open the public hearing at uh, seven twenty. If you are a member of the public and wish to testify regarding the school impact fees, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine.
There's nobody stepping up.
And then I will close the public hearing at seven twenty-one and move to council deliberation questions, anything you'd like to go. So counsel, back to you. Mr. Garcia, you were indicating you had a question.
I'll hold back.
Okay, Mr. Elwood, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was just curious and thank you for being here to field some questions for us. When I started thinking about the portable situation. And I'm reading that, you know, twenty-four percent of the capacity, um, the district has was the inventory of portable provides approximately twenty-four percent of capacity district wide. At the elementary school level, thirty-six percent of capacity is housed in portable classrooms. What's the distribution of those portables in North Bend and the other cities within your district?
Uh, I'd have to pull that info. I could send it your way. For the most part, I I would say that the 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 distribution is fairly consistent. Paul City Elementary is actually has the most portables of any elementary school. Um, and the newer, I guess, Timber Ridge and Cascade U have smaller, although they they both have either six or eight portable classrooms in total there. So um, the most, most buildings have between six and twelve portable classrooms.
Cool. Yeah, that'd be great to see that distribution. And then just, and I I think we've talked about this maybe last year or the year before, but is is the portable situation part of the permanent solution?
Yeah, so yeah, um, right before COVID closed everything down, we were starting to to convene a bond planning committee uh, to start working on what that next uh, capital project solution might be. Uh, and we're just starting to uh, reconvene that. Part of that committee's desire was to look at not only capacity adding projects, but um, looking at more of a twenty-year, a twenty to thirty-year long-range plan. And how might that also include reducing the reliance on portables? Uh, for purposes of the impact fee calculation for tonight for the capital facilities plan. If we were to build a building to replace the portables, it doesn't necessarily like it it might not be able to use the impact fees to do that, uh, because it's swapping capacity instead of adding capacity.
Cool. And then thinking about the impact fees specifically collected here in North Bend, what are all of those fees used in North Bend schools or is it put into one major budget and distributed across the district?
Yeah, it's a we we collect the same fee across all jurisdictions and use them for all district needs. Uh, similar issue. Portables added, you know, when North Bend was in the growth moratorium, we were technically using impact fees collected from other jurisdictions to to put things like portables at at those schools. So it's a, it's not a all the fees are collected to the district and then the district uses them based on wherever the needs are.
And then my last question for the moment, and and I apologize if it was in the the plan. I just don't recall seeing it. When we're thinking about the all up sum of impact fees collected and specifically the portion that's collected from North Bend, how does that distribution unfold city by city? I know it's not a one for one based on your previous answer, but I'm just curious what that distribution, that fallout may look like.
Yeah, it ju- it depends on the year and what growth is happening. Obviously, um, North Bend's growth has grown recently compared to previous years. Um, I think, uh, I think we collected about one point five million um, in the last year from North Bend. Which pays for if we were to put that into portables, it might buy um, two or three portable structures.
And then I'm assuming, sorry, I know that was my last question, but if we're able to see a distribution of the budget from the impact fees and so forth, would there be a specific line items as to where those fees are being spent specifically within North Bend school lunch programs, teachers, that you know, how where does that spend go?
Yeah, so the impact fees can only do go towards a cap capacity adding projects. So it has to go towards um, adding portables or into a building, a building. So that's where they they go. It would depend on where we where we start needing to have portables added.
Thank you.
Yep.
So before we move on to the next question, I did want to clarify at this time, we don't have a motion on the table. Uh, I'm looking at this as still part of questioning, but if counsel would want to get the motion uh, on the table and then to be able to go both questions and into discussion, that's fine. Your decision. We can continue either way.
Seeing nobody jumped to a motion, I saw Ms. Cullen's hand up.
Oh, I don't know if this is appropriate question because I don't understand all of the details, but we're probably getting an elementary school number seven out towards Twin Falls Middle School. And I guess my question is, since this would be a new building, would we not build bigger knowing that we will have growth in the future instead of making smaller and planning for portables?
Um, multiple aspects to that question, Councilor Keller or Cullen. How do you say your last name?
Owen, yeah, right.
Okay. Didn't want to butcher it too bad. Uh, the the uh, as mentioned in the capital facilities plan, we are looking at at a number of options to creating elementary capacity. Uh, so that could be a seventh elementary school on the existing land. It could be expansions to existing elementaries. It could be, um, we're also looking at, do we do we change around some of our other buildings? Um, so the the actual formation of what that project looks like is still to be determined and that would be what our kind of bond planning committee looks like. Uh, we do have in the plans, hopefully this fall to be getting feedback from schools and community members as well as staff of of each buildings as far as what those what those uh, capital needs are going forward uh, for each of those buildings. And so we hope to be able to get that feedback from community members and incorporate that into a potential bond plan. Uh, and then, sorry, the second part of your question was.
If the if we were to build the seventh elementary school.
Oh, yeah.
Why do we not go bigger knowing that we're going to grow?
Yeah, there's a couple of components to that. Uh, I'll give you an example for Timber Ridge. Uh, we built Timber Ridge to be the biggest elementary in the district and we use Cascade U as a as an example to Cascade U, which was from a square footage perspective, our largest elementary that also had three portable structures in that and we incorporated essentially that square footage into the square footage of Timber Ridge. Uh, so we made it uh, almost eight, eight classrooms bigger than Cascade U and it opened up full. Uh, what we've tend to see is that when you're building a new elementary school, a lot of families tend to move into that area. When they're looking in the valley, they may choose more a higher concentration near the new elementary school. Uh, so we would continue to look at that. We would obviously want to try to size that to allow for future growth. The speed at which that growth happens can sometimes not be easily determined. Um, and um, the other component of that is is weighing the cost of of that of that construction. The permanent construction uh, definitely has a much higher square footage cost than a portable structure. So there's some balance between that as far as uh, taxpayer support and overall cost.
And yet I've yet to see a school that has not had a portable have to be put on it. Unfortunately, I live in this great school district that people want to have their kids in, which is great. But so we should plan for that, I feel like.
We definitely try our best to do that. We we took that kind of the growth projections and the remaining housing developments that would be within the boundary of Timber Ridge. Thought we had given ourselves, uh, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids uh, worth of growth, future growth capacity. And that was blown out on on year one. So we definitely try to incorporate that um, as much as possible.
Heather, you got questions? Okay, anyone else? Mary.
Hi, Ryan. Thanks for coming tonight. Of course, uh, my question again is about portable. So I have concerns as well and and just looking for some further information. Uh, is it safe to say we've hit capacity on at least five of our schools in the space of adding portable walls right now or can you give us any information about capacity reach?
We're definitely getting close, closer than we'd like. We're definitely getting close, closer than we'd like, uh, in certain areas. It really depends on kind of what the, uh, supporting spaces are within the building. Uh, Opstead probably would have some room to do that. Uh, a- and and some of that also, Councilwoman Miller is also a a need. Uh, let's, let's take all the housing growth happening in North Bend. Uh, when those kids show up, we're going to need classrooms for them. Um, and so the options are either putting portables on those buildings or re-boundary and moving folks around. Uh, most of our our elementaries are quite full with portables, as everyone has noted. And so there is, uh, uh, tha- that is becoming less and less of an option to try to reallocate the population to to meet those needs. Uh, but there are some spa- you know, there is some space still within those elementaries that could probably support future portables. That being said, I I don't know that that's our preference. But again, it's it's a bit of a timing difference between when can you build that, uh, permanent, when can you get a bond passed? Have the couple of years to to construct that facility, um, and can you do that before all the kids show up?
Thanks, Ryan. Has there been any discussion that you can, uh, prize us with about, um, potential of a new? Um, like Heather was mentioning, a new school, um, as far as years and the projection, uh, as far as from even talking about it to actually building it out. Could that be somewhere between seven to ten years, you think? Is there any way?
Yeah, in the capital facilities plan, it it anticipates that within the next six years that that capacity would be built. Um, we are hoping to kind of, again, be a. It may, we may get to the point where we we run run a bond next year to be able to have that. It will depend on how quickly, um, the 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 scope of that project coalesces. And so we're, again, we're kind of starting that process. Uh, we were doing a study and survey, which is where an architect comes and assesses all the conditions of our buildings. Uh, we'll take that into consideration and then, like I said earlier, we'll we'll this fall or or winter, we hope to have a community input to kind of. What what does the community see or some of those needs and then try to see if that, uh, if that coalesces into. A a project list that makes sense to put onto a bond and and try to ask voters to support.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next.
I guess that's going to leave me.
Yeah, it's, I think it's you, Mr. Garcia. Don't see any other hands.
Ryan, how are you today?
Great.
Good. Ryan, I'm going to preface this by saying that I know that you don't create these school district policies on. Uh, and that you're the messenger. But I, you know that I am massively frustrated with the state of our schools in North Bend. And I, you know, some of these portables. Some of these portables might have been in North Bend Elementary when I was there.
There there may be some that are there. That's correct. I don't know that they're currently being used as a classroom though.
Ryan, we we. I I just don't, I don't even know if I know where to start. I mean, in this capital's facility plans, I see nothing about improving. Uh, outdoor play spaces that are covered at the schools. Um, I don't see anything about any kind of, I mean, North Bend Elementary is is old, it's beaten up. I mean, there's no, I get that this is, this is an impact fee. For new growth, but capital facilities are also more than than capacity, are they not?
True, for purposes of this plan, it's really capacity generating progress. So, uh, the way when we go to formulate a bond for upgrading a facility or or playgrounds or things like that. That would be, uh, as far as that bond planning. So we didn't, well, I I would agree, those are high priorities that we anticipate would be supported by the community. Um, for the purpose of this capital facilities plan, we don't put those in there because they don't generate capacity. So like the playground upgrades, that that makes a lot of sense.
Well, I'm not saying playground upgrades. I mean, I'm just saying like covered sp- I mean, I don't know, Ryan, I.
So, and, yeah, ju- and just to be clear, that that capital facilities plan that we're looking at tonight is classroom capacity. It it is not, uh, the impact fee is and its calculation is strictly related to to adding classrooms. Uh, not adding support spaces. And so I I don't disagree that those need to be, uh, strongly considered in any future bonds, uh, Mr. Garcia, for sure.
But we're, but we're, we're, we're looking at adding more portables here again, right?
I don't know. Depends on how how much the the enrollment growth continues to happen.
Well, I mean, I I I get that the new elementary schools were built in Snoqualmie at the time because that's where the growth was happening.
Yep.
So here we are. You know, ten years later, now the growth is happening in North Bend and we're just, we're at the same spot we were ten years ago. Twenty years ago, thirty years ago, forty years ago. Right? And I don't see anything in this plan at all to address those type of of issues. And and I I think that the citizens of North Bend and their children deserve better than what they're getting right now. And again, Mr. Stokes, I know that this is not you personally, but I. Oh, but maybe Mr. Given has joined us because I was going to just say, I'm massively disappointed. That 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 wasn't the case, but I, maybe I'm seeing his name pop onto the screen as we speak. I I. I expect better for our elementary students. Great, we have a beautiful high school, maybe one of the nicest in the state. But the rest of it is, I mean.
Yeah, I I would agree. I think there's definitely work to be done. Uh, you know, remember when Snoqualmie was growing, we were, um, busing Snoqualmie kids up to North Bend Elementary and down to Fall City. Uh, you know, parents and community members that lived in that area were were saying the same thing that you're saying now, Mr. Garcia. So that's not a, I'm also not offended by it. Like, I I understand where you're coming from and I think that's definitely a. Uh, a definitely a high priority for what to do in the next projects.
So, so, uh. Ryan, can we just go back to Chris and Ryan? This Mr. Garcia thing, it's just, it's kind of throwing me off and it's messing up my game a little bit. I mean, we we were supposed to start this facility study committee in twenty twenty.
Yeah, we started it about three weeks before COVID closed and the committee felt like, um, after the closure happened. Uh, talking about bond planning with the, uh, economic instability and schools being closed was going to be problematic.
So, but but now we don't have a gate, now we're we're a year and a half into this. And here goes another two, three, four, five years. That we have second-rate elementary schools in our city for our kids to go to.
Uh, we will definitely, Chris, I'll definitely reach out to you when we have the, uh, the outreach to the community. Um, to have you help be a voice of, let's do a lot in the in the near future. And let's get, um, voter support to be able to do a lot because we'd love to make significant improvements to a number of our school facilities.
Okay, Ryan, and I, again, I know this isn't you, but. I mean, unfortunately, you're the messenger today and I I just, I'm, I'm at a breaking point here.
I I appreciate that and thank you for being honest.
I've got two years and I'm going to have a free schedule here. Just watch out for that. Uh, sewer. Twin. What is that? Twin Falls Middle School. Sewer. Were you hooked up to sewer yet up there?
We're not.
How come?
Uh, we have a state-of-the-art septic system that we had to build when the sewer wasn't ready, when Twin Falls was constructed.
So what's the, what's the plan for that? I mean, I thought the agreement was that we would hook up to sewer when we ran that up there.
Yeah, I think we're, uh, interested in having some of that discussion with the council and and the mayor. Mr. Dr. Given and I met with the mayor and started discussions with that, uh, last month.
Okay. Um, I. Okay, I guess I'll I'll look, I'll look forward to seeing a facility study committee get started. I mean.
That's underway. So again, we'll, uh, that that has happened, so it's, uh, we'll be formulating some, uh, evening or or other meeting opportunities. For, uh, commu- community members and parents, uh, to be able to kind of offer input on. The needs that they see in in their areas and in their buildings. So that we can try to get a a broad sense of what are, what are all the needs and start planning. Yeah, again, like I said earlier, maybe a twenty-year to twenty to thirty-year outlook of. So what's the replacement cycle, uh, for the remainder of our buildings and or what are the other improvements that are needed? Uh, for our buildings and how do we lay that out in a plan, uh, over the next, you know, zero to to fifteen, twenty years?
So that that group has started meeting?
Yep.
I think that's my, the the bulk of my comments at this point in time is just to. Reiterate my dissatisfaction of the state of our elementary schools again.
Noted, noted again, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Brendan?
Thank you, yeah, and and I'll echo that sentiment. And, um, if I recall, when you were looking for voter support for the. Gigantic campus that is now a high school, it took a while to to get that ramped up to where we finally got the support to make that happen. And as we increase impact fees and collect impact fees, but we see no real impact. Positive impact on our elementary school system here and trying to understand where that spend goes. Taxpayers do get concerned. I've had them express that to me. Why do we keep giving money to the schools when I'm not seeing anything happen in our district, in our area? And then you talk about having to garner voter support in the future. Three years out, I don't know when that's going to be, to make a change in our community. There's going to be a real question, which is, we've been paying the school X millions of dollars every year. And we're still not seeing a change. Why should I support a bond measure? Or any sort of voting measure to give the school district more money for our schools now? What's the difference? Why have we been ignored? So I'm just pointing that out to you that. There will be some, um, clear opposition. I'm already feeling it now. Every time this comes up, every year, we rubber stamp this. I have people emailing me and complaining, why are you doing this? What what's the rate of return here? Because we're not seeing it and frankly, I feel like we are being neglected. And this is a continuing of the same story that we have every year. Perhaps I'm a lot more frustrated this year. About this, but it's definitely something that is on our radar, clearly on mine. And, um, I feel like honestly, we're being neglected, so I have a hard time supporting any more money. Until I actually know that there is a strategic plan of action. It is in motion and we will see real change. And I know, and I'll echo Chris's thoughts as well, that you're just the messenger here. But but there is a definite disproportionate amount of attention being paid on our kids in our school district here in North Bend. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Heather?
And I don't know if this actually is pertains to school impact fees, but. We're talking about how many kids go to which school. Do you still decide who gets bussed where based on population? For instance, back when my daughters went to school, we lived in rural North Bend, so Wilderness Rim. And they got bussed to Chief Canum, which was forty-five minutes each way, ridiculous. They'd go past Snoqualmie Middle School and now that's not an issue because of Twin Falls. But do you still bus that way for population of students?
Uh, we, we have done that in the past, like I said, I mentioned to Chris, right? We had, um, we had a lot of Snoqualmie kids getting bussed up to North Bend Elementary and down to Fall City Elementary. Uh, until that elementary school could get built. So, uh, at times when, uh, school, a specific school is out of capacity and others have capacity, that is a mechanism that. Sometimes districts have to look at, uh, at this point, we're hopeful we won't have to do that. Uh, but again, it's, it it depends on the speed of the growth and and how quickly we can get the, uh, capacity projects up online.
But would it not make more sense to bus the kids closer to those schools? Than sending someone from North Bend or Snoqualmie Pass to Chief Canum?
Uh, again, I I don't know, uh, what the decision points were there. I wasn't here, but I think when that, when that capa- the school is over capacity. Uh, the board, uh, tends to go through a process to look at all kinds of options and try to make the best determination. So, um, yes, it would make sense to have them be closer, but I don't know what the the parameters were on Wilderness Rim going to Chief Canum.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Stokes?
I did before, can I just make one, uh, Mayor?
Well, yeah.
Oh, uh, just, I I understand your frustration. I understand, uh, your concerns and and just know that I echo those. Those are things that we definitely have as our priority, um, for the purpose of tonight, which is the impact fee calculation. Uh, the amount of impact fees that we collect from growth definitely does not, um, build schools. Because there's just, you know, the cost of the school is much greater than the collection of the impact fees. So, um, we have the same frustration that you have as far as, so we're collecting impact fees. But, you know, you would have to build so many homes in order to have that turn into a, an elementary school. And those homes, uh, usually are built before you can build that. So it's it it's a timing difference. This is kind of a goofy, uh, it's a way that, you know, King County has brought in to help, uh, offset some of those costs. But, uh, I think a lot of folks that I talk to feel like that the impact fee should be building the schools, but that that just isn't. Because of the discounts and the, uh, the way in which it's calculated, it it is never intended to build an entire school.
That sparked a few more, Mr. Garcia.
Sure. Mr. Stokes, but we both know that if we had. Facilities improvements built into this, those impact fees would be higher.
So what is.
I think so. It would still be helping. What what the problem? The problem is, is that we are missing the opportunity to collect these impact fees now. Because there is a finite amount of growth that is available to happen in North Bend. And in five years, whenever the school board decides to, oh, let's do something in North Bend. We're going to be most of the way built out and we're going to have lost the opportunity that these impact fees can make a difference. I mean, this is, this is not the same Snoqualmie Valley of nineteen eighty-eight where I grew up and went to high school. And you're the poorest part of King County, right? And this is becoming an a a fluid community and these people that are buying these million-dollar houses. Hold a high value to education and we are not. Getting that treatment in North Bend when it comes to our elementary schools.
The the cost of that new elementary school is incorporated into that impact fee calculation. So we are, we are, the impact fee that's proposed does anticipate building that, an el- an elementary school, the cost of a new elementary school. And that's what's driving that current impact fee.
But does it include the cost of of renovating and adding the capacity in a non-portable manner? For the other elementary schools that are going to need it as well?
If it doesn't add capacity, I can't put it in the impact fee calculation. So while, while that might be on a, on a bond project. To renovate North Bend Elementary or to, uh, make improvements to Opstead. If it doesn't add capacity, I can't, uh, I can't connect it to an impact fee.
But so what you're telling me is we're not going to add any more portables to North Bend or opposite elementary. That's, that's my guarantee today?
I can't guarantee that because like I said, there is homes going in and if we need that for the enrollment. We would, we would put portables in there to house the students or we'd look at what Heather was talking about and, okay. We're not going to put portals in. Where do we, where do we move kids to?
And I, and I think that's the flaw of the logic is is we know where those houses are. We could show you his owning map. Right now and and we're going to end up with more portables down there. And that's, that's the issue.
I might, Mr. Garcia, just before you go, Mr. Elwood, the the idea of a permit for a portable is a city decision as well. Mr. Elwood?
Yeah, and I, just to expand a little bit more on that point. Um, not only the limited resources piece, but. There is an incrementality here and there's been no strategic plan. I mean, my kids are twenty years old and they went through portables. I talked to other kids that are in their thirties. They went through portables. So had we had a strategic vision, a strategic strategic plan, I know you weren't there twenty, thirty years ago. You know, we'd be at a different state right now and that incrementality actually adds up and it actually makes sense and it gives us something more to support. Now, to Heather's point, you know, going up and out, it always seems to make sense to to build more with what you got. Than building a net new building. I think the costs are disproportionate when it comes to that, breaking new ground versus renovating something. That is already existing and there's plenty of real estate at the current elementary schools to actually do that. But when I hear you say the solution for those two schools is to bus the kids to other schools. That's not a solution. That really isn't. We'll build a new elementary school someplace else that maybe be appropriate. But for those kids and those people in those areas, we're just going to have to bus them someplace else. Goes back to the anecdote that I think Heather said, forty-five minutes to here, forty-five minutes to there, doesn't make any sense at all. And what that tells me is that, again, our community is being neglected by our school district. We aren't being taken seriously. by our school district. We aren't being taken seriously. You aren't thinking through, not you personally, but whoever is the brain trust behind your operations is not thinking constructively, creatively, or seriously about our situation in North Bend. That's, that's what this all reeks of. Thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. God help.
Yeah, I I agree with what everybody's saying, but I also want to make it, I think we need to be clear on this. Again, they are restricted, just like we are in different funds on how they can work the impact fee. And some of the conversations that we're talking about is directly related to what the board, you know, school board can do. And I think where we should be presenting this to, and where we as a city should be working more time, and we as a community, so anybody listening to this, if you have concerns, which we all have for years, about North Bend's schools and the elementary, we need to make that point with the school board. And whether it's the current school board or when elections come, you know, just like us, unfortunately, we're not getting a lot of people stepping up to these positions because they're not easy to take. And this is exactly the same thing we need to do is put our our voices to the board and our citizens make their voices known through voting and communicating with the board members about the direction of the school at this point. But, you know, I understand the frustration, but I think we we're kind of going round and round on something that is based similar in our situation on wherever they can spend the funds and how they can add it. We have the same problem as them when impact fees, and also when we get the impact fees. We all know that impact fees, you know, come after the growth has come. We don't get it before then. So it's really hard to spend that money, you know, the right way. And and I agree, not trying to sugarcoat what everybody's saying, but I love the passion. Let's now present that to the board.
And again, I'll reiterate, we all understand, Mr. Stokes, this is not your doing. We appreciate that you're coming here to take this, but maybe it's time for the North Bend City Council and the Snoqualmie Valley School Board to have a joint meeting.
Thanks for that suggestion. What I'm hearing is we we are starting now to move from just questions for Mr. Stokes. We're obviously having some discussion. I think it's going to be appropriate to get a motion on the table before we go further there. But since he was able to join us, let me introduce then for you Superintendent Lance Given, and see if Mr. Given wanted to make any comments and give him an opportunity to say hello to the city council.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to jump in on the call. Sorry that I was a little bit delayed joining all of you. I appreciate all the comments this evening. I'm three and a half months on the job and certainly learning a lot as we go through this process. One of the first things, though, that Ryan and I talked about that that we got going right away was securing a contract with a architectural firm to lead our study and survey process, because I I agree. I think one of the things that was missing that I observed when I first got here was a long-range facilities plan that kind of looks at all of our, you know, condition the capacity of all of our buildings and begins to build a plan on how we're going to address those needs in a in a thoughtful and systematic manner. And so that's, that's been underway this fall. I know that we've already had, our architects have been doing facilities inspections and doing a lot of work, and as Mr. Stokes mentioned, we're going to be pulling together committees and and getting input at each one of our schools to address, to identify some short-term and long-term needs and solutions. So that's certainly a priority for me, and and I certain, I'm looking forward to continuing our work together. I had a great meeting with Mayor McFarland, and we had some great conversations about growth. It was definitely helpful for me just to sit with, I love the giant map on the wall, and we talked about neighborhoods and growth and development to get a good visual on on where things are headed in North Bend. And so just know that that, you know, I'm here for us to, I'm here with with Ryan. We want to be partners with North Bend to develop this this plan for the for the future, and it's underway. So we're gonna, we're gonna get that put together and and that's going to be and you as a community are going to be an active part of that. So I look forward to that conversation, and then we can work forward, move together to develop, I think, a really thoughtful and strategic solution for for our for our communities.
Thank you, Lance. Appreciate you sharing that with council. And as as both of them mentioned, we did have a very good meeting about a month ago, just about already. And it was a good introductory conversation, one we'd been waiting for for some time, and we are looking forward to continuing those conversations around these things. And many of the items being brought up by council were definitely on that agenda. Council knows me well enough and my patience, and I and I asked Lance what what the problem was. He's been here three months. Let's, why, and he solved it. So we're, we're going to continue those conversations. We can, we can certainly promise that from our side. Appreciate it. With that, Mary, I believe this is briefly discussed at Community and Economic Development. Would you like to introduce the motion?
I would. Okay. Come on, drop the page again.
Page twenty-five in your packet.
Yep, I just dropped it, but again. Twenty-five it is. Hold on here, folks.
Possibly twenty-three. Depends on if you're looking at the number at the bottom or at the PDF.
Got it. Pardon me, everybody. I want to say, motion to approve AB two twenty-one dash one one two and ordinance amending the taxes, rates, and fee schedule relating to school impact fees as a first and final reading.
Second, second by Mr. Garcia, or question?
I'd like to make an amendment to that.
I need to get a second before we can move on.
Okay.
Or I needed to fail for lack of a second, one of the two.
Second.
I've got a second by Mr. Loudonback. Thank you. Now, Mr. Garcia.
I'd like to make a motion to make this a first reading.
First reading. Ms. Miller, would you accept that friendly amendment?
I certainly will.
I get that from you, Mr. Loudonback. Would you accept that amendment?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. So the motion currently then is to approve AB twenty-one dash one twelve and ordinance amending taxes, rate, fee schedule relating to school impact fees as a first reading. All right, now, discussion. Mr. Garcia?
I'd like to make this a first reading, and I'd like to see a joint meeting scheduled with the school board, the key members at the at the staff superintendent to talk about some of these issues, because the other thing we haven't even talked about is that maintenance of these elementary schools and that you're scrambling around the first day as a parent trying to pull weeds and pick up garbage and you know, the the parents are having to do the landscaping on the weekend before school starts at at these elementary schools. So I think that it's time that there's some communication delivered and shared and know what some of the issues are at the school board level, the school, just because certainly they probably have issues too that we just aren't aware of. I'm sure they're having a hard time hiring maintenance workers and stuff, as everybody else is, but it's, it's, this has been an ongoing thing, and and Mr. Stokes is tired of me coming down there the day before school starts, trying to knock on his door. But this, this, this stuff has to, there has to be communication of the frustration that the citizens of North Bend are 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 having at this point in time.
Thank you. Other discussion points. Mary, you introduced the original motion. Did you want to speak more to it?
Well, well, I'll just agree totally with Chris's opinion there. I and I also want to add that if our children are our future, we are certainly doing the most disservice. So let's, let's amend that. Let's try to combine efforts here and get those conversations going on a more intimate and clarifying basis of full transparency, so we can not have these kind of conversations. And in the future, you know, we're looking at twenty years down the road, not just six years, like in the way future, let's, let's do a better job. So let's begin that process as soon as possible. I'm supportive of that.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood?
I agree. I mean, it's too late for my kids. But there are new kids moving here and becoming members of our community. There's a lot of people that are excited to explore North Bend, and they're greeted with our elementary schools. It's kind of a put off. It's kind, it's embarrassing, quite frankly. So I, so I would echo my colleagues' sentiments and encourage that conversation to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
I I would like to say, even though my daughters were bussed forty-five minutes each way, which was ridiculous, they did go to a wonderful school. Chief Canham was amazing. And the teachers they had at North Bend Elementary were amazing. So they got a really good education that brought them to who they are now as adults, and I'm proud of Snoqualmie School District for that. But yeah, we definitely could do better and not have them in portables and bust wherever. But I think the school district as a whole is amazing.
Thank you. And Mr. Flumback, anyone else?
Yeah, I echo that. I mean, this isn't an indictment on the teachers or or the staff. I mean, this, this is you know, there, but I don't know. I mean, I've over the years, I've, I've always supported the schools, both with my voice and certainly with my wallet to an extent that is, is I don't even, I don't even know what that number is, but I feel like really over the last twenty years that I've been on and off the council, I've probably really been a disservice to the kids of North Bend, because I haven't realized the state of the elementary schools. And and now that I have a child in there and I PTA wife and mom, you know, those PTA moms are, they're mama bears, and I hear about it a lot more now. And and I'll tell you what, walking around North Bend Elementary doesn't look much, much doesn't look different than when I was in there in nineteen eighty-one or whatever it was. It's, it's, we, we got to do something about this.
Mr. Elwood?
I would extend. We there's decision makers on the other side of the fence that need to do something about this. I mean, I volunteered there. My wife volunteered. We used to do everything that we can. So so I totally agree with you. I've supported the school district in in an elected official capacity and a private citizen capacity, not only for my dollars, volunteering times and all that other stuff. And yet I still feel like the district continues to neglect us. So when I hear you say we, which I agree with, there, there's a a school board we that actually needs to take this seriously and really reinvest in our community, reinvest in the relationships that we're supposed to have as these government agencies working together positively, cooperatively, not here ten years down the road complaining about portables still and seeing that I have to go pull weeds, pick up cigarette butts, and do all these other things. I mean, that's just horrible to hear that's still going on. So there is a real problem here. So as long as the message resonates back to the board. And thank you for coming this evening. I forgot your name, Mr. Superintendent, but I appreciate your being here.
Mr. Given. It's probably Dr. Given, sorry.
Dr. Given, thank you. So hopefully you're getting the raw feedback here, not as an indictment of you. It's just an indictment of the situation that needs to be fixed. That's all.
Thank you. Seeing that just, it looks like council's gotten their expressions out, not not to pile on, but echo a few things. I've heard this is one of those rare instances. I'll speak up because it strikes me as as several of you are talking about now grown children. I'm, I may be, I'm not sure, but I may be the person with the quote oldest child in that respect. So I arrived in our community over twenty-five years ago, and my oldest daughter, turning thirty-three, was introduced very quickly into a portable at Opstead Elementary, and I note that portable's still there. So what we're really talking about here is that frustration for sure. And and not wanting it to be the experience for the next generation's her, her daughter. That's the one side of it. And then I'll echo also what several mentioned. Wonderful teachers in this district. And both of my children certainly experienced that, got wonderful educations enough to take them around the world and back and enough to turn one of them into a teacher here in the district. And so we've, we've got great teachers. They need the facilities in order to be able to perform better. And our children deserve better. That's where we're all at. And with that, motion before you is to approve AB twenty-one dash one twelve and ordinance amending the taxes, rates, and fee schedule relating to school impact fees as a first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. It is unanimous, and we will move this forward for a future point on the council's agenda. Thank you, Mr. Stokes, Superintendent Given for being here with us tonight.
Based on the scheduling of a meeting, sir?
Chris, were you expecting the meeting with the school board prior to this coming back to?
I think it would be, I think, I don't think we need to have the meeting prior, but I think that that it could be scheduled. I also realize that we're going into the holiday season, and it might have to be the beginning of next year, which I remiss, because I won't be there for it.
I suspect you'll be in the audience.
Yeah, but I think that it could be scheduled before we bring this back.
Okay, thank you. That that will be a decision of the committee, of course, and and I appreciate you clarifying that. Right? Okay.
Your honor, before you move on to the next agenda item, I'd like to recuse myself being that I am employed by a competition of the next agenda. So I would ask to be removed from the council meeting and brought in at the next one. Sorry, Wendy, don't take that personally.
Uh, thank, thank you, Alan, for pointing that out. Don, if you would put Alan into the waiting room.
For for the rest of the night. I would like to, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Given for coming, and I would like to say thank you for Ryan for having to listen to us, Matt.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, number seven, is AB twenty-one dash one thirteen resolution extending contract term with Republic for solid waste and recycling services. Mr. Regus?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council, page fifty-three in your packet. We've had a very good relationship, in my opinion, with with Republic providing solid waste and recycle services over the last six, seven, eight years, as long as I've been here tonight. It's just a two-year extension of the current contract. I have to tell you that I receive very few complaints from your residents about the service that Republic provides. So that tells me things are going pretty well. Also tell you that the government liaison that that Republic's had, Russell Joe, over the years, has been excellent. Anytime there's a problem, they're Republic is very responsive to our needs. When we've had a few emergencies such as Snowmageddon, I'm sorry, I brought up Snowmageddon again, they quickly brought out dumpsters to Torgeson Park, so people could could get rid of their trash quickly. So it's been a very good relationship. This is really just about a two-year extension. The rates go up a little bit more than usual because it's based on a consumer price index, and we've just been dealing with inflation this year. So this went to Finance and Administration Committee. I was not there for that, but Don Masto was there, and I think there was a recommendation for approval. So Don or myself can probably answer any questions you have. That concludes my, oh, I did want to introduce, we, since Russell Joe was our municipal liaison, he has since recently left the company, and we have a new liaison with with Republic here tonight, Wendy. And she'd like to say say a few words and and introduce herself, if that's okay. So I'll pass the mic to Wendy.
Hey, Wendy, we'll, we'll let you have a few minutes here, but keep it short, and we're thankful that you'd be here for any questions council may have.
You bet. I was told I get one minute, so it'll be brief, and I'll be brilliant, and I'll be quiet. So Wendy Wyker, I've been at Republic Services about two years, working on the post-collection side of the house with the recycling outreach, as well as our landfill down the Columbia River Gorge that creates renewable natural gas that comes back to the Puget Sound region with a partnership we have with PSE. Very low emissions, very environmentally responsible facility. It's super great to be in this industry. Um, and super excited now to get to the collection side of the house where I'm trying to fill Russell Joe's shoes. I've been in this new seat about two and a half weeks. So I'm getting up to speed and really appreciate the warm welcome I've gotten from Mark and Dan on your team to help me figure out how best to support your community, your residents, your businesses on the three lines of business we have here. So with that, I thank you for your support of tonight's agenda bill and appreciate the opportunity to serve and partner with your community for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Um, or if, if there are any questions for, uh, Mr. Regos or for, um, uh, Dawn, since she was, uh, overseeing the F and A committee. We can get those on the table. Otherwise I'll look for a motion from, uh, let's see, F and A will need, um, either Jonathan or Brendan, whoever is the second for that committee. Okay.
I actually attended that meeting. How about a five deal?
How about that, Chris? Why don't you, uh?
Motion to approve A B twenty-one dash one-one-three, a resolution authorizing a two-year extension of the contract with Republic Services for solid waste and recycling collection services through March twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion is second.
Way to get her done, Martin Bach. Way to get her done.
Uh, uh, discussion, Mr. Garcia.
Yep, I think, I think, uh, you know, we, we didn't, this is probably the, the right choice for this time. I, I do think, uh, there was some concern that we need to make sure we go out to bid uh, on the next go around to this. Uh, but it wasn't the right, right time with the circumstances this year. And that's not an indictment on, uh, Republic Services, but it's, it's our, our oversight obligation, uh, to our citizens and make sure that we're getting the best deal out there. Um, we've had great, uh, service from them, in my opinion, um, that there is an issue. I know that, uh, we'll be able to call Wendy, just like we're able to call, uh, Russell and, and get things taken care of. So, uh, I recommend a due pass.
Thank you. Mr. Lauenbeck, do you have anything, Dan?
Uh, hi Wendy, good to see you here in another capacity. We, we've shared, uh, the days at the, uh, uh, S C A pick meetings before, and she's a, a great and effective coworker there. And, uh, you know, you're, you're stepping into some big shoes with Russell, but, uh, apparently he lost his mind and decided he wanted to be an elected official. Which is, you know, you have to question his judgment on that. But other than that, he was a great representative and I'm sure you will be too. I, I too would recommend a, uh, do pass here.
Thank you very much, council at large.
Wendy, we want to hear your voice. Please don't let them silence you because you are now the Russell and we want to hear what you have to say.
I am happy to chime in anytime.
Seeing no further comments, discussions, uh, we should, um, see if we have any member of the public wishing to speak on this item before we take action. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak about this, uh, proposal, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine.
And once again, we have a very quiet audience.
Well, that's good since I'm a little out of my rhythm. So, uh, uh, appreciate that. So the motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash one thirteen, a resolution authorizing a two-year extension of the contract with Republic Services for solid waste and recycling collection services through March of twenty-twenty-four. All in favor, say aye. Are you opposed? Motion carries. It is six-zero unanimous with, uh, Mr. God Health reclusive. And Miss Masco, if you could invite Mr. God Health back to the meeting.
You don't have to, Dawn. Just.
I did know I went out on a limb there. Thank you.
If we, if we just voted to remove Alan's council seat, doesn't that make it six-six moving for, or three-three ties moving forward? Not that seventh member?
That's pretty much what it does.
Okay.
Sweet. I get a big vacation.
Parliamentarian then on what we do next. Oh, thank you. Next on our agenda, uh, and agenda item number eight, A B twenty-one dash one fourteen. A motion authorizing addition of Public Works Maintenance Position. Mr. Regos.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again, City Council, page fifty-seven in your packet. Um, this is about the addition of a Public Works Maintenance Worker specifically in the parks, streets or stormwater area. So this person would generally not be working in, in water and sewer as much, um, if at all. Um, we had a verbal discussion at Transportation and Public Works Committee back in September about the possibility of adding an, an employee, a parks, uh, parks and streets maintenance worker. And there seemed to be support from our committee, T B W Committee to do that. I think this went to Finance and Administration Committee, which I did not attend that meeting, uh, last month. And there was a request to bring it to full city council. So hence why I'm here tonight. Um, give me a little brief history on employees in the parks and streets, uh, group. Um, it's back in, um, the city used to have four parks employees. Um, in, in two thousand and seven, roughly, the city went from four parks employees to three parks employees. And the city still continues to have three parks employees. Oh, we've had a hard time finding seasonals the last two years, in part because of COVID last year. And then this year, uh, probably just the wage just wasn't enough. Um, so parks were actually one less than we were in two thousand and seven. Um, streets, on the other hand, we haven't, the, the city hasn't added any streets maintenance workers since two thousand and twelve. Uh, they added one in two thousand and twelve. Um, so city currently has four, uh, workers in the streets group. So, um, we've lost one in parks since two thousand and seven and gained one in streets, uh, since two thousand and twelve. So we're about, we're a net zero since two thousand and seven, fourteen years ago. So, um, let me tell you a little bit about where the city is with respect to some of the operations and maintenance responsibilities. So currently we have eighty-four travel, uh, miles, travel lane miles in the city. That's called forty-two centerline miles. And since two thousand and nine, the city added, uh, Truck Town Annexation. So that was eighteen travel lane miles. And then over the last ten years or so, we've added, uh, fourteen travel lane miles. So that is, we've added thirty-two miles of road to maintain. That includes striping or signage, uh, street sweeping, leaf removal, culverts, et cetera. So we've gone from, uh, fifty-two miles to eighty-four miles in the last, uh, since two thousand and nine. So that's about a sixty-two percent increase. When you have streets, you also have more stormwater runoff generated, right? So you've got catch basins, you got drainage ditches, you got culverts to maintain. Uh, we annexed a large stormwater pond in the Wood River area. Um, so we got to maintain that one. As you know, some of our streets downtown, they have, uh, splitter islands and roundabouts that need to be, uh, landscaped. Um, not all the new streets need to be landscaped by the city, of course, but there are some key streets. Um, of course, these employees, also these maintenance workers are there and, and for us during emergencies. So whether it's filling sandbags, whether it's snow plowing, um, that, that's what these guys do for us during the emergency events. And then also the non-emergency events, if there's a, a dying deer in the road, unfortunately, or if there's, uh, watering the downtown flower pots, cleaning parks bathrooms that may have gotten damaged during a week. And that's what these guys do that I would not call emergencies, but they're, they're working hard for the city. Um, so I kind of feel like we're at the point in time that we need to add one, uh, employee. And this person would work in, in parks and streets, just kind of helping out emergencies, non-emergencies, parks, streets. Um, we've grown a lot, sixty-two percent in our street area. And, uh, so I feel, I feel pretty strong about this, happy to answer any questions. I just don't want us to get any leaner than we already are. We are pretty lean. We've probably saved some money, um, over the past ten, fifteen years, not having a, a, a real large maintenance staff. But I think we're kind of at that point. So that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Before we move to, uh, question and discussion, let's see if we have any member of the public wishing to speak on this agenda item. If you are a member of the public who want to speak to this agenda item, please indicate the chat box or by star nine.
Not see any comments and most of the members of the public have left.
Have left. It must be getting late. Thank you very much. Um, uh, let's see, let's get a motion on the table. Uh, this came through, he said, F and A.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. God Health.
Yeah, motion to approve A B twenty-one dash one-one-one, one-one-four, authorizing the addition of Public Works Maintenance Worker Position.
Second.
Got a, uh, motion in a second. Thank you very much. Um, I, Mr. God Health, the floor is yours. I did see Mr. Rosen's hand as well.
Yeah, I'm going to leave it to my fellow finance, uh, members to put their input on this. Um, I know that the discussion was it, so I'm going to leave it to them to discuss it because it was the reason we brought it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Just a quick question, Mark. You know, you're mentioning about the roads and the increase in miles that we've, uh, accumulated over the years. Most of these roads are new roads, aren't they, in the housing developments that are, the condition codes are really actually very, very high. Am I correct on that?
Well, it's about fifty-fifty. So we've added fourteen travel lane miles due to development, which I would agree has a hundred pavement condition index. Um, so the, the streets themselves are in good shape and the signage is in good shape. But we've added eighteen miles out in Truck Town of not good roads. And we've had a lot of problems with road shoulders needing to gravel them, uh, you know, out at exit thirty-four. So, um, it's about fifty-fifty, a little more on the annexation side.
Okay, thanks.
And anyone else? Mr. Lauenbeck, you were the second. I walked away from you. Did you have anything, Dan?
No, I, I just would support the, uh, the passage of this particular item. I think that it's important for us to have the flexibility. This individual, while assigned to streets and parks, is also somebody that can be called upon uh, to perform other duties as assigned. And, uh, we are how do you say it? An aging workforce. And we may, uh, we may need to have some people being cross-trained and brought on board that, uh, like any good company, we need to, uh, to be actively pursuing a, a succession plan for some of those folks that have, uh, invested a lot of time and energy to the city. But will probably be lose, leaving us in the near future. So I think it's important that we have people that are capable and ready to step up and, and possibly perform other duties. So I would recommend a due pass.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Rosen? That's why I was going to say, if you'd hold a moment, I would see Heather. Thanks.
I love your perspective, Russ. I wasn't thinking about it like that. I was thinking of from my daughter's perspective and of seasonal workers at Marymore Park. And to have someone that's there consistently learning year-round for the city is a definite benefit. And if they stick on and get promoted, the much the better.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Before I go back to Mr. Rosen, anyone that hasn't spoken? See any, Mr. Rosen, back to you.
Sure. Um, on this, this position, the maintenance position, it really, in the last fifteen-plus years, we have not grown in that area. And I do support the hiring of this particular position. But I do have concerns and I caution us to, we need to start to look at the big picture. Our Public Works Department has doubled in size in the last ten years. With this hire, we'll be just about doubled from sixteen to thirty-one employees just in that one department. And we're starting to pick up a lot of staff and with that, a lot of overhead. And I'm concerned that staff, meanwhile, at least in that department, we're starting to grow faster there than we are population-wise. Um, I do understand this position. It, it's logical, it makes sense. But I do have some concerns overall, what we're doing in, in the growth of that department. And I'd like to maybe just tap the brakes a little bit there and, uh, take a look at that, uh, in, in a little more detail as we move forward. But on this one tonight, um, I see the need and understand it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I, I fully support this. I, I feel like we needed, I feel like one of the qualifications, uh, I saw was that this, this, uh, person have a, has a CDL. Uh, and so I guess I have a, a, a question of how, we have, we will hopefully have six of these people after tonight. How many of them have CDLs and how many of them don't?
Almost all of our maintenance workers have CDLs. A couple at the treatment plant don't and don't necessarily need to, to for, perform their duties if they're in the lab or pressure washing. Um, but I think, I think all of our parks and streets guys and I think maybe all but one of our water guys have, have a CDL. So we're, you know, overall, probably eighty to ninety percent have, have the CDL.
Okay. Cause one of the things I see this too is, is if there's a large snow event that I won't name because I'm tired of hearing about it, uh, happens, we, we have people that could help us run the plows on, on shorter shifts and, and keep our guys fresher, uh. You know, there, there has to be two people in each of these trucks. And if they can split the driving time, that helps. And we now have an additional new plow. So maybe we could knock out some of these things a little bit faster. Um, I also feel like it's important for us to have, uh, a de- decent amount. And I think that we're getting there. Uh, and I'm not advocating to add more staff at this point other than this one person. But I also feel like it's important for us to have public works, uh, employees that, that can prioritize the things that, that we as a city as a whole feel. I know that, uh, we have a great relationship with a lot of our parks, with Seivey Parks District. And I truly appreciate that. And I think that's a, hopefully it's a win-win for them and us. It seems like it is. But, you know, they have their own workflow and with us having six guys, if something comes up that we as a city feels a priority, um, we have the ability to, to, to get it, to jump on it and, and get it, get it fixed or get it, you know, up and moving however we need. So I feel like this is, this is important, uh, in those respects as well.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
I, I stand in full support of this. Uh, my question for Mark is, um, as far as training goes for snow plowing, for example, do, can you give us an idea of how that would work? I mean, with there's no snow, do we take them up to exit thirty-eight to play in the snow? How does, how does that work?
Great question. Yeah, it's a great question because I don't know how to use a snow plow. I'm not the right guy for that. But, um, Mark, Mark Prey, our maintenance supervisor, can you answer that question offline for you? There are some training classes. It's a couple days. Yeah, so.
How soon, if this goes through, which I'm again, very, very excited and passionate about this going through personally, um, how soon can we put out an, uh, a call to, to get that person?
Yeah, I think we can probably get somebody here before, um, first snows. Hopefully I didn't just jinx that, but, um, so in the next month or, or, or two, I would say.
Okay. Right. Just, just kind of to, to chime in, um, due to some other issues that were going on. We actually did already advertise for a maintenance worker position, which now we would be able to then translate those applications that we received into this position. Um, so we could actually hopefully schedule interviews in the next few weeks and bring someone on fairly quickly. Yeah, we did get, we did get some really good candidates from that pool. So it's nice that we now have a position to use them for.
That's great to hear. Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Dawn. Anything, anything further? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash one fourteen, authorizing the addition of a Public Works Maintenance Worker Position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much for that, council. Appreciate it. And with that, we have exhausted the regular agenda and will move to Mayor, Council, Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. Uh, council, Mr. Lauenbeck.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I just wanted to mention that, uh, we have several events coming up related to the forthcoming Halloween festivities here in the city. And, uh, not the least of which is our downtown merchants, uh, get-together where, uh, the Halloween
Get together where the Halloween street where they give out candy to the kids and that'll be on the thirtieth. I'm sure that was probably in your notes, Your Honor, to mention that.
Thanks for taking that one.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any, anything else I can take off your agenda, just let me know. But I wanted to put a shout out to Bree Craven, who I saw diligently portioning out forty-six. Bags of large candy in her cubicle over the last couple of days and then delivering them out. To be distributed by our merchants and Bree, you're doing a heck of a job and everyone in the community, I hope you get out and participate in that particular program. We're going to have music, there's going to be candy. Everybody dress up, have a great time, but be very careful, obviously. You know, little kids, costumes, traffic. Let's be careful. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yes, we all know Bree, it was a little bit worrisome seeing all that candy in her office. If she were to eat any of that, the, the energy would have just exploded. Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I'll be brief on it and I'll just say, drive safe and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. God Health?
Thank you. Well, since we're on the, the top of Halloween, I wish everybody a safe one and again, a warning. We in Si View here get a lot of people that come out and drive in their cars. And I would ask everybody to be a little bit safe and maybe park your cars and then come and get the candy. Because every year we see a lot of people driving, following their children around and my fear is that somebody's going to get hurt. By a car, you know, somebody running out and jumping in front of cars. So please enjoy it, walk there. Also, the leaves are coming down, everybody. We're going to begin to see our storm drains begin to get filled. We do, I have seen. The street sweeper coming through quite a bit, but if, you know, over the next couple of days, we're going to get some storms. If you do see a storm drain that is completely plugged and keeping the water from going on, going through it. I encourage yourself to clear it away so that it doesn't flood any houses. So those are the two items I just want to point out to people. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, I echo what most are saying. Be careful on Sunday on Halloween. There's going to be lots of kids and it'll be dark early as usual, so just watch out and, but. Glad to see this happening again after a little break for a year due to a minor little pandemic, so. Good to see everyone out and glad they get to have this moment. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to say thank you to you and to Heather Colan for showing up at the. And cutting the ribbon at the Valley Center Stage's new home with the Grange within that partnership. That was a great moment this weekend, not only just for those two organizations, but it's a great moment for our community because now we have a viable venue for the performing arts. And it is a true community theater, so that was great. Additional shout out to Bree as well. You talked about energy a moment ago. Yes, she is energetic. And fantastic and awesome. So much kudos to her for helping coordinate that and jumping in, rolling up her sleeves and making sure the magic happened on that day. So. So thank you to you three for, for really making that a very important moment for the actors and for people that belong to both of those organizations. Another note on Halloween, a Halloween-related note. The theater will be having a staged reading on October thirtieth of a play called She Kills Monsters. It's a Dungeons and Dragons fantasy adventure type play. And the theater's encouraging people to show up in costumes. I believe the reading starts at seven-thirty. But it should be another fun thing to do the night before Halloween. So other than that, thank you all. Have a safe holiday and see you on the flip side.
Thank you. Ms. Colan?
On a controversial subject about the COVID mandate, I would like to put a positive spin. And thank the employees that went ahead and got the shot, even though maybe in the beginning they didn't want to. I believe by their doing this and being willing to do this, they made our community, King County and all of Washington State safer. And so I applaud them and I am very grateful and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I, and I will note on your question for the audience as well as Council that. We did not lose any employees for choosing to leave versus being vaccinated. We do have a few that were granted religious exemptions. And otherwise, everyone got a shot. I also heard today that we had, we're now at ninety. Eighty, no, eighty-seven some percent countywide, which apparently leads the entire nation. That was a pretty awesome statistic. Mr. Garcia?
Well, I feel like I've talked a lot already today and I can't add anything that my fabulous council members before me haven't already said, so I will say, good night.
Wow. Okay, thank you. I mentioned a little while ago, Mr. Miller is out for some well-deserved enjoyment for the evening, so we'll pass on that portion. I have just a few notes for you. A lot of these are upcoming events indeed. Drug Takeback Day is going to be on Saturday, October twenty-third. I believe on, if I'm looking at my calendar right, that's this Saturday from ten AM to two at City Hall. Public is encouraged to bring their expired, unwanted or unused prescription medications for safe disposal. More information about this event is on the community calendar of the city website. Valley Animal Partners is hosting a pet vaccine clinic on Sunday, October twenty-fourth. From ten AM to noon at Si View Park. Free dog and cat vaccinations are available to residents who could not afford them otherwise. More information again on the city's website in the news section. Reminder to all that starting Monday, October twenty-first, excuse me, twenty-fifth. New King County Health Order becomes effective that requires proof of vaccination. Or negative COVID test prior to entering certain indoor businesses, including bars, restaurants and outdoor venues with more than five hundred people. The rules on bars and restaurants, much lower number. The outdoor venue is the five hundred people. Please remember to follow these guidelines and please, please be kind and patient to the employees of area businesses. That are required to adhere to the order. So King County Health Order, not their choice. City of North Bend Downtown Foundation is hosting a trick-or-treat. Street on Saturday, October thirtieth from two to six PM. Free event features over forty participating downtown businesses, live music, lots of candy, as you heard about, and ample time for community re-engagement. A reminder to all residents to not blow or rake leaves into the streets. This was mentioned earlier, I think, by Mr. God Health. In fact, the worst thing you can do is to blow leaves into the streets because then they will clog their storm drains. Leaves left near the sidewalks or storm drains can block and clog and damage the city's street sweeper. Please deposit leaves into yard waste containers for proper disposal and composting. And finally, tomorrow at ten AM, I will be hosting a meet with the mayor coffee event at Trail Youth Coffee located at two-twenty-sixth East North Bend Way. I would encourage you to come and join me to discuss any city-related topics that are important to you. And with that. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, everybody.